Okay, we're live and we're recording. Welcome to the November 4th, 2021 Village Board Meeting, and we'll start the meeting with a pledge of the flag. Lot of groans. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, tonight. Anybody who's watching us live on Facebook. We'll start our meeting with the, can I get a motion to approve the Village Board meeting minutes from October 21st, 2021? Ruth Seiko and Andy, any changes, any questions on the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Curried? Hi, Jody.
Hello. Hi.
Alright, now we have citizens comments with Jack Laporte. Jack, if you'd unmute and tell us what's on your minds.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I live at 37 Virginia Street, the old Burton House by the entrance to the school. And it usually takes a long time for me to complain, but I've, my gut, every time I see it, it's at all hours of the day. The corner of Oneida in Virginia at where the school is, people just run the stop sign. It's not like a California rule where they slow down at least. No, they just go through it. That's at all hours of the day. I walk my dogs at 11, 12 o'clock at night, midnight sometimes, could be at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, could be at 10 o'clock in the morning. Not only do they run the stop sign, and by the way, that's at Elizabeth Street School, or not Elizabeth Street School, but Elizabeth, the corner of Elizabeth in Virginia as well. There's a lot, especially during the times of school traffic. You have a lot of kids that walk. People walk their dogs, people run. My neighbor down the street got hit by a car, not like, you know, a big hit. The lady stopped because she actually saw that he was in front of her, but she was rolling through the stop sign. Especially coming down Oneida Street. I've talked to Chief Laugh and Check last spring, and you know, he's saying really, it's a tough spot when people, when, when they actually sit there, whether they're doing paperwork or whatnot, yeah, people still slow down and stop because they see a police officer. But if they're not there, they just roll through. Well, my grandkids, they play at my house all the time. My next door neighbor's kid almost got hit by a car. It's really, Ruth knows, she lives on the street. It really is tearing me apart, and I don't like to complain, but it's really a safety issue. And, and the thing is, is I feel bad to complain because I don't have a solution. And I want to help in some way, but I have no, it's just really frustrating as a citizen. I like the village, grew up here, you know, on Oswego Street, but it just is getting to the point where I don't want to take it into my own hands, you know, and, and say something to somebody, but I even had, I had a district employee cut me off, ran the stop sign, and I actually talked to the barberry, Joe DeBarry, because I'm friends with them, because I rough with them, and he actually spoke to the gentleman, and this gentleman apologized to me, but apologies is nothing if you run over a kid or you hit somebody. There's plenty of times where there's almost an accident. So not only do they run the stop signs, you have trucks all the time lighting it up with their wheels, you know, screeching, whether it's up the hill or down, you know, they got to make a, you know, make it like their truck is cool. And that, and by the way, this is, and I wish I had video for everything, but it has nothing to do with age, has nothing to do with gender. These are all ages of people, all, all walks of life doing this. And if I have to do video, which is probably illegal, I would, and I would keep data if I really have to, but I don't think I should have to do that. Anyway, I'm done talking. You get the point.
Hey, Jack, my name's Mike Lockwood. I'm lieutenant with the police department.
Hey, Mike.
We, we do get a lot of traffic complaints, and if you spoke with the chief, I mean, if it's been a year ago, he may have put it on my desk. Typically, what we do, and it is a tough area, we can sit back at those intersections a little bit, like on the school campuses or back, and if somebody's just blowing right through, typically, they're not going to see us. If they slow down in what you refer to as a California stop, they might be able to look for us, and then they hit the brakes and they stop. What I'll do for you, and it's not illegal for you to record or tape or anything, so I just wanted to let you know that. I'm recommending that you do not confront them or talk to them or do whatever, take matters into your own hands. If you have continued issues, what I'm going to do is I'm going to meet with my sergeants, and we'll come up with a plan. I'll set up, it's called a step detail. We dedicate officers that they have to do so many hours at that location, at that stop sign, and if, if you can kind of just gauge if you see it, if you can kind of mentally kind of times, or if it's the same truck or whatever, and you see that happening, just take note of it and give me a call at the police department and call the dispatcher, ask for the lieutenant if you don't remember my name, and we can try to narrow down problematic times, so we don't have officers sitting there during time, but it seems like you said that it's happening kind of all the time.
Right. So, thank you. I appreciate that. I know Chief Laugh and Check was telling me that you guys do that periodically, and I can appreciate that. And he had told me about the speed limits too. He said, go 30 miles an hour down your street and see if it looks like you're really going fast, and it does. But these people are going 50 miles an hour. You can't tell me they're not. I walk my dogs all the time. But anyway, I really appreciate that, Officer Lockwood. I will do that and get back with you at times, more specific times, but it's all hours.
No, and like you said, but you know, and if you notice that, just like you said, the district member or if it's people from the school, and we have school resource officers working in the school, and what I'll do is I'll note and see if they can put something out to the student drivers and to staff members to let them know that we're getting a lot of complaints and that we're going to be doing aggressive traffic enforcement in that area. So hopefully, yep.
Very good. Thank you, Michael. And you're all set, Jack? I mean, and let us know, let us know if it works or if it doesn't work. I mean, if you see an improvement, we'd like to hear that too.
Okay. Just so you know, Mayor Clark, I'm going to drop off, not because I don't care about the village, you know I do, but I have another meeting at work here at the hospital, so you guys have a good night. Thank you for hearing me.
Yep.
Bye bye.
I could interject to Mike Lockwood, Lieutenant. I saw, I've driven through Salve a couple of times where I've noticed maybe problematic intersections. They have the stop sign, but then under it's another sign that says stop means stop, and it's not, it's not something scribbled by somebody with a marking pen. I don't know why that would make any difference. It gets my attention.
Well, it does. I mean, it's not tricky. It's, it's, it's a double stop sign there, but if you notice at Canton Street and Downer Street, because it's, you're coming off the country road, there's the double stop sign. I mean, because, you know, that just brings it out more. So, I mean, that's, that's definitely a good suggestion. We got a, we've been getting a lot of complaints, and we had actually somebody reach out that was concerned about, you know, the kids crossing at the crosswalk there. And I know the chief's actually in contact with the state and, you know, for other crosswalks in the village, but even looking to do, apparently, he saw it down in Manliness, and we were actually doing research on it. It's a little pricey, but they hit the button and it just flashes lights and definitely gets your attention so the kids can cross safely. So, but yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to anything that makes it more prominent and visible. I would say yes.
The other thing that sometimes works in those, that sort of thing are those donated signs by auto dealers or whoever that basically show the, the speed going in and flashes the red light or the green or the yellow as you're, as you're coming down the road. So that, those things also are a reminder to somebody that they're, that they're speeding.
And to be honest with you, at one of our last chief's conferences, because we have the speed reader that we put out periodically, you know, during the summer months and everything, now with all the leaves and the roads kind of narrowing a little bit, and the winter time, we've, we had to get a new battery in it, so we put it up for the winter time right now, but there are those signs that you can either mount to traffic posts or whatever that run off solar, and they give you the speed or they give you that, you know, like that flashing light to slow down, and those do make a difference, you know? I was driving today and, you know, they must, they have it set that, you know, it will flash this light until you reduce your speed to either the speed limit, five miles above or whatever. And it does get your attention, and you do see people slow down for it, so.
Yep. It always gets my attention.
Yeah.
Not that I go super fast, but, you know, going 35 into 30, it starts flashing and I go, oh, I better slow down.
I have seen some that are sponsored by auto dealers, Romano and some others in other municipalities. So I don't know whether McGuire or somebody would be willing to or interested in doing something like that. Gives them some advertising too.
Yeah. It's always worth checking. Thanks, Bob.
Bob, do you know where you saw that sign that's sponsored by the dealers?
They're in Skinny Atlas.
Skinny Atlas?
Mm-hmm.
Huh. Very good. Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Mike. We'll move on to trustees comments. Andy?
Just the agenda, thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to Mike Shepherd.
I just say that I've known Jack a long time, and this has been an issue for him for a couple of years. I think he's owned the house for maybe two or three years, so I'm real glad that the police department's going to take a good look at that corner because it's been bothering him for a long time. Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
I, I know that street has been a pain in the butt for a long time. I mean, long before I was on the board, I just remembered just hearing discussions about neighbors wanting to put a stop sign at Warner Ave, so the kids had to stop again before they got to the next, well, if they don't use the stop sign, that isn't going to do any good anyways. They just keep going right on down the street. So I appreciate Mike Lockwood being able to give some, some answers to Jack, because as you say, Jack is a pretty low-key guy, and he's a, he's a dyed-in-the-wool Beville guy. He's not looking to cause problems, so.
He sure is.
Anything else, Mike?
That's it, bud.
Okay, we'll move on to Megan.
Just the agenda. Thank you.
Ruth Seiko.
Just the agenda. Thank you.
Alrighty. I got a couple of things. November 11th, 3 to 9 p.m. is Oh Chocolat. That's 16 of our shops slash boutiques that will be open, featuring chocolate treats and whatever the specialty is in their shop on sale. You get the chance to see some businesses you might not normally see. There'll be a trolley operating. For instance, one of the businesses is Green Ivy, which is a significant walk from the four corners, so you can just hop on the trolley, and they take you out, drop you off, and in a few minutes, the trolley will come back and anybody that wants a ride back into the village. So it's a nice chance to see some of our local businesses, get out of the house. Hopefully, the weather's decent. If you go on our Facebook site, I've listed something about it with the 16 businesses, but there is also a website or a Facebook site called Oh Chocolat. So if you're interested in reading any more, it's, it's, some of the different businesses have been posting sites, things on the Facebook sites all week, and what they're going to be offering and that kind of stuff. So there's, it's another one of those things. It's kind of like the Margarita Fest. I just don't know if you are thinking just alcohol on this one, maybe thinking more sweets than, than drink, but it'd probably be a little of that in there too. Don't forget, this weekend is Fall Back. 2 a.m. Sunday morning is the official time. When we lose an hour of daylight, set your clocks back. And we can get depressed earlier in the day now because it's going to be dark at 5 o'clock pretty soon. This is a pretty good time of year to start looking out around you for some elderly people that might be alone, or if they're not alone, there might be a couple of elderly people, and you might want to look out and see how they're doing, particularly with holidays coming. Can be a pretty tough time for older folks who don't have family to perk them up. Same thing with, if you know, families that are struggling right now with job situations and money. We, we have a ton of people who put together Thanksgiving dinner packages. Most every church in the village does. I think you could probably call almost any church and get on a list. Call the volunteer center. They'll take care of you. Baldwinsville, Helping Baldwinsville. There's a lot of sites, and it's no sense of somebody sitting there at Thanksgiving time with nothing to put on the table special when there's people that would gladly help get that for somebody. So take a look around and if you think of somebody, make a phone call. We're pretty good at that, and Beville looking out for other people, and I hope we keep it up. Got a message from the county, and Chuck mentioned that they're doing something in the beginning of the week, but they are very happy with our efforts to limit vaping and marijuana and cigarette smoking, making our, our plan a little tougher than it was, putting a little more starch in it. And so they're going to do something special to recognize the fact that we've taken that step. So people are noticing. We did have some concerns a couple of days ago. Chuck and I were talking pretty regularly about the river rising and some of the potential flooding, and I went around today and went down to Mercer Park, and I can see the sidewalk again. The whole sidewalk that runs along the river into the park is now not underwater anymore. So obviously, the river's down a couple inches, which is good news for a lot of people. Had started to get into the cemetery. It was up over riverbanks quite a few places. It was lapping onto the lower deck at the River Grill. I've never seen that happen. So I'm sure people were concerned. I'm guessing people going down Seneca Beach Drive probably had a little water in their yards. And it looks like we're getting a bit of a break with water level dropping and no precipitation. We could sure use about three or four more days of no precipitation and nice breeze to evaporate the water and get everything back to normal. It's always comforting to me to have somebody like Chuck to talk to because if I call with a question, he's already checked it out, and usually, I'm going to ask him to look at something, and he go, I just came from there. So we're in good hands. Thanks, Chuck. And, oh, I just got something on email today. I weren't even aware that this was in the works, but apparently Steve D'Arcangelo, a year ago, January 2020, so it's almost two years ago, made an application to the state to put a left turn lane into Aspen Springs Drive, into that development, Aspen Springs, which, and this is the area almost across from Budweiser. And if you drive through, if you're coming from the east heading into the village, you'll notice the stripes in the middle of the road, which means you can't, you're not supposed to go in there, and you're not supposed to make a left-hand turn into Aspen Springs. Same situation when you get into the village. You can't make a left turn into there either. So Steve had said the residents would really like an entranceway coming from that direction, and the state said that they've decided that that is appropriate, and it will be part of the 2022 construction season. So what really all it means is they'll take those hash lines, cover them up, and put an arrow for a left turn. But as, right now, it's not legal. But when they get that done, it'll be a legal turn so that people will be able to get into their neighborhood, and always nice to get good news from the state when you didn't even know you were asking for it. So if you know anybody in Aspen Springs, you can tell them, and I'm sure they'll be happy to hear it. That's all I got. We'll move on now to department heads. We'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda there.
Okay. Greg's not here. We'll move on. Village clerk, Jody?
Yeah, I'll stick to the agenda.
And, you know, it's kind of sad. We didn't, today's Mo's birthday. We're not getting any cake.
We had cake today.
Oh, you had cake. Okay. Very good. So it is Mo's birthday. If you didn't get a chance to wish her a happy birthday, you still got time. Move on to treasurer. We have, we're double teamed tonight. We have our current treasurer, Anna, and our treasurer in waiting, Mark Baker. I don't know who was talking to us tonight, but anything we need to know?
Well, I would just tell you that I'm still working on the financials, but it's been a real pleasure having Mark on board, and you guys are going to be really happy to have him. He is delving into things that I have never delved into before, new things that, well, new, some really new things that are going to shorten the task a little bit more, I think, or they would have for me, anyway. He's wonderful to work with, and he's, he's makes me feel really good when I'm trying to get myself together here and get everything turned over to him. I'm trying really hard to get it turned over properly. So we've been, I feel very happy with the way we've been working together, and I really welcome him. Mark, do you have anything?
No, just thank you very much, and it's, it's nice to be here, and I just want to report that debits equal credits. That was on my first day, my first accounting class. That's what they told us, so. I'm stuck to that my whole life.
I hope I don't steer Mark away. He's been doing really, he's just delving right in, and I wish I had all his expertise, so it's going to be great.
Good. We appreciate that. Nice to see you, Mark.
Yeah, nice to be here. Thank you very much.
What's next on the concert agenda?
Um, I, I know I have a couple coming up with my friend, Mr. Bernstein, but I think we have something in January, and then I'm going to Florida, and I'll have something in Florida. So I think Humphries McGee maybe at the Landmark Theater. I, I don't know without looking, you know, I'm, I'm getting up there age-wise. I can't remember. I have to have a calendar.
Yeah, I can tell. You're, you're really up there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you showed up, and nice for everybody to get a chance to see you, and it's nice to hear that things are working.
I'm putting the dishes away.
Mark's been sending me emails and letting me know what he's been working on and, and keeping me abreast of what, where he's getting to, and then, and Anna lets me know that he's an eager beaver, so we're, we're good hearing that. So you have any questions for the two of them? If not, we'll move on. Thanks. Move on to the senior center. Ruth Troy.
I just want to briefly update the board. You may recall, we had a guest from the Health Department talk to us about a walking trail at the Senior Center, and I did receive an email from her today that the signs are ready and should be installed next week, so I just want to make sure that Chuck, that you're aware of that as well. So that's going forward. Also, we're celebrating anybody who's 85 and over on November 22nd. It's a Monday. You do need to make a reservation. It's going to be a drive-up event. So please call by the 12th, which is next Friday, and let us know that you want to take part in that. And just a couple of reminders, seasonal, as the mayor spoke about, we do take reservations for the Rescue Mission Meal for Christmas. The Thanksgiving reservations are due this Friday, but if you would like the Christmas meal, you have until December 6th. So please give us a call. Nancy will be happy to help you with that, and also Nancy's very busy with HEAP right now. So if you need to recertify for HEAP, have any questions about HEAP, the Home Energy Assistance Program, give Nancy a call about that. She'll be happy to help you out. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me. Thank you.
Again, if, if you're a senior or if you know a senior, get them in touch with the Senior Center for just about any problem that they have. They need somebody to talk to them, you know, if they're stressed out, they can find somebody to talk to them on the phone. There's no reason not to get help and to feel bad. There's a lot of things people will do that, you know, if you need meals, Meals on Wheels, our Meals on Wheels has got to be as good as any in the county. Donna Metz is just sitting there waiting to help the next person out. She's our little saint, patron saint of hungry older people, and she takes, she makes sure people get fed, and then she tries to figure out later how they're going to get paid for them. You know, I mean, she's, they eat first. That's the major concern. So anything else, Ruth? Okay, Ruth, thank you. Public Works, Chuck.
Yep. This time of year, we're usually crazy with brush pickup. The leaves haven't fell yet. By now, they're, it's usually crazy, you know? We went through the whole village in two days this week. Normally, this time of week, we can't get out of Candlewick in a day. So as soon as they start coming down, hopefully, we'll be before the snow, because we've run into that before when people get their leaves out, and we push them back in with the plow trucks. But the plow trucks are all up and running. The last week or so, they've been putting a lot of time into that. Everything's ready. The trees, our staff has taken almost 150 street trees down the side of the road, these ash pour trees. The contractors in here now, we awarded the bid. The gentleman out of a company out of Watertown got it, and they're going after these trees like crazy, and then some of them are huge trees. That's going pretty well. Now, we're starting to switch gears here or two and spending quite a bit of time on the Christmas lights. We got to get all our lights out, check our lights, get them hung up. We do have a tree. The crane's going to come in with the tree next Friday, I believe. We'll get that in, and should be good there. The Water Department had their yearly walkthrough with the Health Department. I've done it for the last 35 years. Corey Perkins is the new supervisor over there, and he went through his first walkthrough with the Health Department. A little stressful, and he did a great job, and it turned out very well. They're still working on the meters over there, and other than that, unless there's questions, we're good. Oh, oh, and also, we got to get together too. We have to have some, we have to have trucks, I believe, available for the lights on the parade and the Turkey Day. I think we have to bring four or five of the plow trucks in for blockers with the police departments, or getting ready for that also.
Very good. Any questions for Chuck? Is it okay to put pumpkins in the brush pickup stuff?
Put them right in there.
It better, because people are doing it already, so. But somebody asked me that. All right, we'll move on to the police department. Lieutenant Lockwood.
Hello? Yeah, Chuck, just let me know when you guys do the tree, and we can help out if you need it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And just to touch what Chuck was talking about, having the plow trucks come in. We do have the Turkey Day, Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving morning. That's going to start at 9:00, and we have the parade of lights, tree, tree lighting. That's going to, that's that Saturday, the 27th, and that starts at 5:30. For both of those events, there's going to be road closures. Thanksgiving morning, obviously, it's short amount. We just have to wait for breaks of runners. We have volunteers and police officers there. We know that people have to get out and get to other relatives' houses or get to a house or whatever, but we'll make accommodations when we can, and that's safe for the runners. It's going to be a little more problematic for the parade of lights. That's going to have the four corners shut down, and just to let everybody know, just, we didn't have it last year. We didn't have the Turkey Trot last year, so just to remind everybody. But for the parade of lights, we are not going to have any parking the entire day for Saturday between Oswego Street and Elizabeth Street in front of the businesses. And that's what we did two years ago. We ran into a problem the year prior to that with everybody, the crowd, because it draws a lot of people. They were all around the parked cars, and somebody came out of the restaurant, wanted to leave, and was driving through, and it was just unsafe. So we're going to designate that as no parking, and it's going to be blocked off. I understand it's problematic because it's Small Business Day, but that's what we have to do.
Well, we'll have to do a good job of putting some stuff on our Facebook site, on our website, and maybe try to get something to the messenger to let them know where people can park, you know, where there's, you know, you've got Mercer Park, you've got the Village Lot. Obviously, the, the lot down at, you know, the square not a great place to park, because once you get in there, you won't be able to get out for a while. But there are other non-municipal areas that people can park, and so we'll just have to remind people to not park. To not park, you know, you can't, you cannot park there. It's just the rule.
We're, we're going to have barricades up and no parking signs, so it would be. Not impossible, but they'd have to do some moving to get in there. So it's, it's going to be clearly marked, so.
But I want to make sure that I can do what I, what I can do to make sure people know ahead of time. You know, I don't, I don't like the idea of somebody saying, hey, relatives come in, I live on. You know, Chelsor and like, they couldn't get in our street because there were runners and they had to wait for two hours to get on our street. And I said, well, first of all. They're usually pretty good if you tell them what, what you're there for as far as if there's a break in the runners. They might let somebody go down the other side of the street for half a block. Um, and otherwise, I, I said to the woman, I said, how long have you lived in Bolinsville? She says, oh, you know, thirty years. I said. That, that room has been there for, I don't, I don't know if it's thirty, Chelsor wasn't there thirty years ago, but. But you know, that, that room has been there for a long time. It's not the first time we've had this Turkey Trot. They got to go by your house every year. You know, maybe you could have had somebody come a half hour earlier and beat the traffic. So we're trying to do what we can to, to notify people and uh, save the gnashing of teeth as much as possible. Thanks, Michael.
Yeah, I'll get ahold of Jody and I'll give her the roots and all the information so we can post it on the website and we'll go from there.
That's great. Thanks, Michael. All right, we'll move on to pending business. And I get a motion to amend Resolution number one thirty slash twenty twenty-one to read that the term for village justice is four years. Instead of the approved resolution of three years. Andy?
I'll make the motion.
Which, it, it just came up last, after the last meeting, why is Judge only three years? We, we thought it was four years and. So it's supposed to be four years. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. New business. Can I get a motion to turn over the list of the twenty twenty-one unpaid water sewer bills for the Town of Lysander districts? In the amount of six thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents to the Town of Lysander for collection. Ruth Seaco? And Megan O'Donnell? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Uh, item B, can I get a motion to turn over the list of the twenty twenty-one unpaid water sewer bills? For the Maple Road Water District in the amount of two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents to the Town of Van Buren for collection. Andy and Megan? Sorry, Chef, you're half a second late. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. I can see. You get a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the twenty twenty-two renewals of the current Exelis Medical Plans. At a seven point three percent increase and the current dental plan at a three point four percent increase. With an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-two. Ruth Seaco? And Megan? Any questions? This, this were. Reviewed by both DPW and the police. They, they exposed and they were, they were. They told Mo, they had no problems with them. Uh, just very little change in what they were from the past, so. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Item D, can I get a motion to transfer funds from? Count F eight three two zero dot one slash water plant personnel. To F one four four zero point four slash engineer contractual in the amount of thirty-eight thousand. Six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Andy and Chef? This is, this is because we had money, we, we had put money in to hire an engineer and we also were paying Chuck and. Chuck's salary was coming out of. The former engineer's site, so when we went to pay an engineer bill, there wasn't enough money in that account, so. This is just what would have been Chuck's account now being transferred over. So just so you understand.
It's already in the budget. It was already in the budget.
Already in the budget. It just, just was a, put a finger and hit the, this account instead of that account and. They were both basically the same. I mean, it was Chuck and it was the supervisor, superintendent, and Chuck is the superintendent, so. Even one of those accounts could be paying for Chuck. The other one is now paying for the engineer. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Um, while we're on that subject, Chuck, um, there has been a question a couple of times. Where do we, how much have we been billed by the engineer for to this point? You're muted. Unmute, Chuck.
There, we, we just submitted paperwork, I believe, in this meeting for, I think it's twenty thousand four hundred. Um, that's. That's the only thing we've paid them up to the state.
From the day you started. Okay.
Right, yeah, yeah. This is the first one and, and we're in good shape.
Somebody had asked me.
Yeah.
Where do we stand? And, and I told them that you were on top of it and clearly you are.
Yeah, we've got it. I, I made it, or what, everything they, all the meetings they've attended and, and, and where the money's gone and. And uh, I'm pretty happy with it. Where it's worked out well, but this is the first payment they've got.
Did we vote on item D, Jody?
We did D. We're going to go on to E now.
Okay, okay. I thought we voted, but it wasn't. Sometimes I get distracted. Item E, can I get a motion to transfer funds from G eight one two zero? Point one slash sewer plant personnel. To G one four four zero point four slash engineer contractual in the amount of six, thirty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Andy and Chef? All in favor?
Question.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving money out of water funds and sewer funds to cover engineering, but they also do roads and other stuff. Is that all copacetic?
What actually this is doing is putting money into what was our engineering.
I understand, but you're taking it out of funds that it was set up for. To use not only in those accounts, but. Highway, Warner Bridge, Avenue Bridge, for example. Is that okay? Those are. Sewer funds are pretty tightly. Controlled. And, and you're, what we're using is the old funds that were Chuck's wages. Which came out of those two things. I understand what we're doing. I just want to make sure we're not doing something we shouldn't do. I know the water side, we can use any way we want. But I.
Well, this, this is not from this, that's not from the sewer fund. It's from the sewer salary. Which is a whole different thing. You know, if it's Chuck.
You know, the sewer salaries come out of the sewer budget. That, that's all sewer money.
But we can transfer anything out of sewer now with open, we've been approved to do that.
I think Bruce, if I, my understanding is new on this, but I think it's staying within the fund, Bruce. It's just moving from one budget line to another. In, in, staying in the same fund.
Okay.
Water and it's still in sewer. Am I right about that, Anna? Thanks.
I don't know. I, I'm concerned what, what Chuck is, um. What activity is taking place with the engineer that, is it going to fall under sewer and water? What the engineer is doing for us is that water and sewer related?
Some of it's water.
All of it?
Most, most of it has been.
That's the only thing I'm concerned with when you brought that up, is any of it highway?
Yes.
Well, parts, parts, part, parts of those salaries are, are taken out of the different departments and, and, and the engineer's been involved in. Things on the sewer side, things on the water side.
And we do have money, we do have money in the, in the general fund also.
Right.
So, we haven't moved that. We, we probably should be doing.
Are we worried about a legal problem or are we worried about just the balance of accounts?
Wrong account, maybe if we're using it for the wrong reason. Um. If the engineering expense isn't truly sewer related or I know a lot of it's water related. But if there, is there any highway related? But we also do, we, we had the, the engineer's salary split in three funds. General, water and sewer. So we do have money in the general fund. Um, that can be moved to the engineer expense. So like, if we do a check, the check might end up being cut from three different funds and we do that all the time.
Yeah, so this is basically just a journal entry, uh, because it's not spending money. It's just moving money within the, uh, the general ledger.
Sounds like Bruce is concerned. Sounds like Bruce is concerned that the contract expense might not be allocated. The same as a, as a staff employee would have been. Right, Bruce?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, when the check is written, it can be allocated. This, so this isn't any, there was, there's been no expense yet. This is just. Moving, from what I see, it's just moving it into a, a, a general ledger account. Uh, to, so it would be available and if, if in fact, money's needed to be moved from this account to highway. Um, uh, engineering contractual, I see no problem in doing that.
Well, Andy touched on it. Correct me if I'm wrong. At, at one point, I thought sewer funds were like the sacred cow.
Those are sewer, those are sewer funds. This is a general ledger account. Yeah, even though it says sewer, it's, 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 uh. It, it's not sewer, it's not money from the sewer fund. It's just, it's an allocation of expenses from what I can see.
Against sewer funds.
Yeah, it used to be the sewer fund was untouchable. It can only be for those specific. That's gone away with the county's changing rules here.
Yeah. Well, the, the state passed a law that allows us to use our sewer money for anything we want to use it for. To get it out of that fund. So we don't get, turn over our sewers and get stuck with a whole bunch of money in a fund that we can't touch because it's a sewer fund. So they gave us a waiver for a year to take that money and use it as we wanted to use it. So.
I'm happy if Anna and Mark look at it and, and decide it's good. I'll be happy. I just wanted to, I just wanted for my sake, wanted to know.
I'd like to delve into that, look just a little bit further. Yeah.
Okay.
A little concerned about the highway part of it too.
Well, do we want to, do we want to just table this to the next meeting to we're more comfortable? I mean, we haven't, we have enough of the first transfer to take care of current engineering fees.
Yes.
So we can hold this and, and put it on the agenda for the next meeting and get a little.
I think we should be safe and try and wait.
All right. Can I get a motion to table this?
Hey, who?
Bruce? Second. Andy? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? We'll table that. For clarification? Item F? Can I get a motion authorizing Mike, Mark Baker, the soon-to-be Village Treasurer, to be added as a signer? On all village bank accounts. Um, as it stands right now, Andy's made a motion. He raised his hand. Can you get a second? Ruth Seaco? Stands right now, uh, Anna. Who's, who's on that list? You and me?
And Bruce.
So this would mean that if Anna is not in the building and Mark is and there's something needs to be done. He can do it until he officially becomes treasurer on December first, so. Any other, any questions? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried. Um, that's it on the official agenda. Anybody have anything else that you'd like to bring up before? We uh, sign off with paying bills and stuff. I, I do have a question for Chuck. Have all those traffic? Crossing signs been picked up or did more of them get run over?
Muted.
You're muted again. People have tried for a long time to mute him. He finally found the way.
Well, maybe he has to put his glasses on to talk.
That's right. Hey, that could be too. No, no, they're all in. We had left a school one out and that was the last one to pick up, the one on the Knight Street, but they're all in.
Okay. Bruce had mentioned that the one had gotten run over. It seemed like a few days later, the other one was gone.
Yeah, and if I'd been able to make trustees comments, I would have reminded. People that they need to be aware of those crossings, even though the signs are gone. That people are still in them and it's still their right responsibility to stop when someone's crossing. There's a significant difference. Mark would know this. At the end of Brown Street going across there, once those things are gone, it's like. The drag strip, somebody's flying, you know, the checkered flags are going and they're off.
Yeah, um, and it's kind of scary sometimes, you know, to think about kids stepping out from that Eldon pathway and. Trying to cross over and not be able to see a car coming over the top of Oswego Street and they. Not being seen by that car. Um, but I just thought, I was hoping that they had been taken in and hadn't all been destroyed by. Stray car.
No, but the garbage trucks are back making left-hand turns and stuff.
Why don't you get out there and wave them the other way?
Because it'd be just like Jack getting out of, down Virginia Street, causing trouble.
Anybody have anything else before we uh, sign off? All right, can I get a motion to pay bills as audited? Andy and Ruth? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried? Can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight nineteen? I see Andy's hands up already. Looking for Megan O'Donnell's hand went up. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? See you all in two weeks. Thank you.